Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's case is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. For cases that require public hearings, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take the roll.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Freed?
Here.
Mr. Preisner?
Present.
Mr. Calp?
Here.
Mr. Nagar?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Tavobin?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
We have eight per quorum.
Next would be, when did you wish to take that matter up, Mr. Fiender?
Oh, we can, uh, we can try now.
Okay.
If you indulge us, we have another outgoing planning commissioner we would like to recognize here, so if I can have one more commissioner, Kinnar, come up to the podium. You remember him, right?
Too little regret.
So before Mr. Kinnar goes off to greener pastures, I was gonna say, probably we should say greener vineyards, right? We wanted to recognize his dedication to service to the planning commission. I just realized you put in some overtime here. A normal two-term commissioner is a six-year term. We got you for an extra half a year, I think, in there, didn't we?
You did.
So above and beyond call, very much so. So I'd like to recognize your dedication, above and beyond, and read the plaque presented by the City of Topeka this 21st day of November 2022, in recognition of Wiley Kinar for his service to the city as a member of the Topeka Planning Commission. Planning Commissioner, February 2016 to September 2022. Vice Chair, January 2018 to January 2019. And then finally, Topeka Planning Commission Chairperson, February 2017 to December 2017. So you ran the gamut here. Chair, Vice Chair, a member of this esteemed body, signed by Michael A. Padilla, City of Topeka, Mayor. So if you can hang for a couple seconds and say a few things, we'd love to have that.
I'm on the clock. I've never finished anything in four minutes in my life. I'll do better today. First of all, to staff, you know, on my own behalf and hopefully on behalf of the citizens of Topeka, we appreciate all the hours that go into all the work that goes into putting these meetings on. And to the commissioners that I served with in the past and those still serving, thanks for putting up with me for all the time, and best luck in the future. The work is important. Best advice I can give you is don't ever come into the meeting last. That's how you end up chairing a meeting when the leadership doesn't show up and finding yourself chair eight months in. So that's the best advice I have. Thank you.
To add a corollary to that, or just don't show up to the meeting at all. That's how I got in this position. All right, next is on the agenda is approval of minutes from the October 17, 2022 meeting. Are there any corrections or changes? Not seeing any, I would call for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, a second. Chris, would you please call for vote?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Preisner?
Aye.
Mr. Calp?
Aye.
Mr. Nagar?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tavobin?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
All right, next item on the agenda is declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff. No one's stepping up, so I believe we've had none of those, so we will move on to item D, which is the action items. The one item is the public hearing of PUD 2205 by One Gas Inc., City of Topeka, and Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Kansas City in Kansas.
Commissioners, Dan Warner with the Planning Division will be happy to give you a quick summary of this case. So as mentioned, this is PUD 2205, Gage Center PUD by One Gas. Subject property is approximately 6.1 acres. It's at 401 and 501 Southwest Gage Boulevard. The PUD is to allow the continued use of office on the property, plus in addition for interior storage, and also a light industrial use for exterior storage of materials and vehicle parking, and that's only per the approved site plan. I think it's important to kind of reiterate here that the I-1, that's part of this application, the industrial zoning, is just that outdoor storage use. There are no other I-1 uses that are permitted as part of this PUD. Staff recommends approval. A little more information here, this is a view of the property looking west towards Southwest Gage Boulevard. Some existing zoning, this property has got a few different zoning districts. It's R-1, but also a PUD with R-1 and O-N-I-2. I'm R-1, a single family. O-N-I-2 is our office and institutional district. The bulk of that property was rezoned in 1997 to that PUD. The property is located in an area that's got commercial, office, multifamily, single-family zoning with single-family homes, offices, apartments, and high school, also cemetery to the east. And as mentioned already, we're rezoning to a PUD with O-N-I-2 and I-1. We look at the future land use map, the proposed office use, the continued office use with that addition for interior storage is consistent with the office designation that's on this property. For the outside storage area, the PUD master plan includes an eight-foot vinyl fence with a six-foot landscape buffer along the southwest and north property lines, along those residential property lines. The office use is maintained along Southwest Gage Boulevard and is still transitioning from C-4 to R-1 zoning. We'll also mention that in addition to that vinyl fence and that landscape buffer, the applicant is desired to keep as many of the existing trees along that south property line, so adjacent to those residential lots as possible, so trying to keep as many of those existing trees. The PUD master plan is what's kind of carrying the day here for this zoning case. The buffer, the required buffer is shown there on the plan with those colored lines. So the fence, eight-foot fence again, that vinyl kind of residential fence, that six-foot landscape buffer is planted on the outside of that fence, so not on the One Gas's side of the fence, but on the outside of adjacent properties. So that's where that landscape buffer is planted. So that runs along the southwest and north property lines. It stops a little bit short of Southwest Gage, and you can see some landscaping on the north side that's planted along that new entrance. There's also landscaping planted along the southern part of that new entrance from Gage. And then additionally, some new trees will be planted along the front edge that aren't currently there today to help kind of screen that area in the future. So the PUD is calling out the O-N-I use on the west and the east half of the property and the I-2 use on the west half of that property. So this is the master plan that's approved for that, or would be approved for that I-1 And again, staffs recommend approval. There's a couple of conditions of approval in the staff report. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
I do have one question, Dan. I just want to make sure I understand the boundaries correctly. I see we're adding trees and a buffer in there. What was there previously?
So the property is, the western half of that property is currently grass, so there's existing trees that are within that area and grass, so that's what's there currently.
So actually, this is becoming a much more fuller buffer than is currently there. Is that, is that right? They're adding trees?
They are, they will be adding. So they suggested they're going to keep some of those trees on the south side of that storage area, keep some of those existing trees, and then, well, a lot, but a number of the trees will be removed with this application. So I don't think the buffer is, and that landscape buffer is more than what's currently there today. I think it's included as a way to mitigate some of the loss of the existing trees and to buffer those residential properties.
Okay, okay. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding clearly. We are not losing any of the buffer, but we're actually gaining some buffer?
Not really. I think the, I think the landscape buffer and the fence are new. There are some existing trees on the property that will be removed, but, so the landscape buffer and the fence are new.
Okay.
New to the site.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, Dan, when you guys discuss these landscape buffers during the planning process, do you ever, do you ever talk about the, specify what species they are?
I think we can through a PUD. I think we default back, generally, we default back to the landscape code, which provides some flexibility on the plantings and the species types, so.
Right.
We chose not to specify species in this PUD. We did include some language about initial planting height being of a certain.
I did see that, yeah. I just bring up the point that, at least on that south, along that south fence line, the possibility of getting a little more detailed on the type of species and maybe a coniferous type evergreen shrub that was the same height, but it's gonna be there all year long. Certainly soften some of that fence and the sound.
Mr. Calp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, if this is approved, it'll be introducing industrial zoning into an area that I don't think has ever had it before. I think the staff report's real clear that there's only two, because it's a PUD, there's only two approved industrial uses. And my question to you is if this owner or subsequent owner wanted to do a third or permitted use in industrial, would that require a PUD amendment?
It would be a major amendment.
Or it'd be a major amendment, so it would come back to us. It wouldn't be something that'd be handled administratively.
It would come back to you.
So it's either that way or an out-and-out rezoning?
Yes.
Would be necessary. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing them, and I would invite the applicant or their representative to come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate your time. My name is Nathan Jamison. I'm with One Gas. And so I want to just say, Mr. Warner, thank you for going through everything. Appreciate it very much. And I figured you guys were gonna have more questions, and I don't have much more to add because I thought you did a good job. And I believe it's item D on the agenda, and I would just like to open up to you all for any questions I might be able to provide. One thing I wanted to mention real quick on the landscape buffers, that is something we've been talking about for the last couple of months, is trying to be sensitive to the neighbors to the south because of the green area and the vegetation that they're used to. We want to try to keep as much of that as possible. So I just want to make sure I reiterate that to everybody here, that we understand what our neighbors are used to, and while we still want to use as much of the site as we can, we also want to know and be good neighbors. So just want to make sure that was included.
Sir?
Would you go in? He's got some, just for some clarity, we have some pictures of, for some of the storage that we mentioned. Mr. Warner's gonna pull those up. So we talked about, you know, additional pipe storage or stick pipe. What is, you have this, it's about 40-foot PE poly pipe that would be stored, and as you guys can see, one thing we want to make sure is with that eight-foot vinyl fence, is that this will not go above that fence. And so we want to be obviously sensitive to what the peripheral view has been, what the, you know, the visual aesthetics, however you want to call it. So we want to make sure that that was accommodating as well. You know, the next one, sir. This right here is about eight feet tall, so this might be, you might see a bit of the top of this, but that'd be about the extent of it. Obviously, you cannot double stack any of this, so it's not like it would be maybe a typical storage-type yard where they double stack. You could really see stuff from far away. And so that's why, just want to make sure you all saw the actual pictures of the material that we have out on the field. And when we say spoil bins, I know that can have a bit of a negative connotation. We don't want that to be the case at all. Basically, whenever we do remediation, whenever we do a dig, it's soil, dirt, gravel, it's stuff that we pull from the site, but also that we can take back to the site for remediation before we put sod back over the top. So I just want to make sure that everyone was kind of clear when we said spoil bins, if I mentioned that. What questions may I ask or actually answer for any of you? Yes, ma'am.
What is the fencing material gonna be?
It's gonna be, I believe it's a white vinyl fence. I've seen it around, we have some on site right now, currently, kind of back in that little residential lot that we kind of have, which is interesting, but it'll be a solid white vinyl fence.
Okay, so it's not like chain link?
No, it is not chain link, no. So when you mentioned the, yeah, when you mentioned the chain link aspect, I believe that's gonna be facing Gage Boulevard for the parking lot, so. But no, as I say, for the southwest and north boundaries, that will be the white vinyl fence.
Okay, so you can't see through it at all?
You will not be able to see through it, no, ma'am.
Okay. And the lighting?
Yes, there will be a lighting plan put together. We'll make sure that it just shines on our area. We'll make sure the appropriate blinders are placed on it so that it doesn't affect our neighbors, and we'll definitely accommodate any needs of the council itself, of the planning commission, excuse me.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dean.
Yeah, that's good. Could you describe what a CNG compressor station?
Sure, yeah. Think of it as, great way to describe it, is like a air compressor. You guys have seen air compressors. So basically, it's something that's motorized that holds air within it, and then it pushes it out upon need, and so that's what we're gonna have, is a compressor station. We have one existing right now on 200 East First. Actually, it's a public station as well, and it'll hold compressed natural gas to supply and fill our trucks that currently utilize CNG.
And what about the CNG fast fill stations? What are those?
Those are, that's how the compressed natural gas gets into our trucks, and so it's no different than what you see at our public station right now over off 200 East First. And so it's four of them. Like I said, it fills a truck up in about 15 minutes.
How much noise does a compressor station produce?
As I say, noise is, I'm trying to think what's comparable, probably comparable to a commercial air compressor, whenever it fills up. Basically, what it is, it won't make any noise unless it's being consumed, but when it's consumed, it has to fill back up. That's the noise you hear, but it will only happen during standard operating hours. We have just a couple of trucks, just a few, I would say would work after hours, so the noise would be very minimal after hours, normal working hours, let me say, unless there's an emergency. I want to make sure I put that caveat in there.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
What type of landscaping are you considering on that south side?
Well, as I say, the hope is that we wouldn't need too much, if we could keep most of those trees and some of those bushes in place, but if not, something that would be comparable, that would get to like the same height, you know, in that four to six-foot range, and whatever we think would be best for, obviously, the commission, the council, and our neighbors. We want to definitely be accommodating. We're not gonna put the one-foot boxwoods in there and hope for the best, so.
Any other questions? All right, sir, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, now open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward and introduce yourself.
My name's Ed Klema. My wife and I live at 501 Southwest Gage Court. We've had a relationship with One Gas or Kansas Gas because of the difference in our mailing address, and so it's been there for quite some time. I'd like to speak a little bit about community and neighborhood values. Primarily, we moved in this neighborhood about four years ago. We like the sense of peacefulness, quietness where we're at in Gage Court Circle or in Gage Court, and the security that we feel there. Community values, I think, are really important, and how is this zoning change gonna enhance our neighborhood based on those values of the community and neighborhood itself? We're in an area which is residential, and also we've got a school with 400 children right across the way that's gonna be a neighbor on the north side, which concerns us from that standpoint, and this, how is this enhancement gonna increase the value, which a good neighbor should do for theirs, when this, our property values, the neighbors it? So we consider it a peaceful neighborhood. Granted, we've got Sixth Street right south of us that has some noise that we deal with, and also Gage Boulevard, but also one of the other things is the current compressor slash engine that's on this property that kicks on intermittently, and it sounds like you've got a diesel truck running in your front yard until it kicks back off, and we hear that fairly often. Getting involved in ag production over the years, I've been on a lot of farms in the last 30 years, and it's, farming operations is a business. It's also got, usually got houses on those operations. Very seldom have you seen one of those businesses where they take and put their machine shed, their cattle pens, the supplies, power equipment, and tractors within 50 to 200 feet of that house. And they do that to maintain, first of all, safety, but also that peace and quiet, which you need to have. So this proposal is gonna put that right smack in our backyard, and we're within 150 feet of this fence line that you talked about. You know, even our neighborhood has some, has its touch of nature. Since we've lived there, I've had turkey in the backyard. We've had a red fox, the last year, visited us two or three times, and of course, other creatures of the night. But neighbor last year crossed the way about this time of year, had two antlered bucks in her, she could see out of her kitchen window in the morning. I'd like to know how this enhancement is gonna enhance our neighborhood when we put up an eight-foot fence that you cannot see through. I've got a feeling that our nature is not gonna be enhanced that way as we see it today. Being a good neighbor, One Gas has been there for quite some time. They have property that borders, that's all in Gage Court Circle. Since we've been there in four years, the brush and that so-called green space that they've got, those trees, has grown into the right-of-way. One of the neighbors called the city, and a crew came out and cleaned it up and cut it back. A good neighbor would have gone in and made sure it was mowed after that to help the neighborhood. It has not been mowed since, and that brush has grown back, and it's up to about over my head now, right up to the edge of the roadway. So I guess from this standpoint, what I see is I, you know, I truly can't believe that One Gas has the resources that are so limited that they have to build a service yard in our back door in the center of a residential area with a school of 400 children right next to it. I know there's gonna be dust, dirt, we're gonna see those kind of things, we have wind going. Sorry, but I respectfully ask that you protect our neighborhood, our neighborhood values and the children at school, and I'd like to ask you to please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak to the commission? Please step forward, sir.
It was the sir, I was the sergeant.
Oh, pardon me, sir. Thank you for your service.
My name's Tom Cook. I live at 511 Southwest Gage Court Circle, and through the representative of One Gas, we bought the house 23 years ago because my wife worked at the office.
Sir, sir, you need to address your comments to the chair of the commission, please.
Oh, okay. All right. Anyway, say we bought the house because my wife worked at One Gas, so I have good feelings toward the One Gas. She's passed away about three years ago, but my concern, I guess, is because of the uproar that it's gonna cause, and my cat goes hunting in that bad area, you know, the trashy area there, brings back snakes and stuff, but that's all gonna be closed off, and like my neighbor said, we get wild, wild game up through there. I've looked out my front door and seen deer eating on his lawn. That's gonna stop it with the big fence along there, so that's some of my concerns. I don't, I'd like to say I'm not against it entirely, I just would like to see some concerns, like maybe push their back fence up a little bit so some wild game could get through there, something like that, and the lighting would, I'm hoping they really hold true on keeping the lighting out, because we have a dark area back there. We don't have streetlights. We've lobbied against those several times. We're just kind of a little small community back there, so the fence and the lights bother me.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else that would wish to address the commission on this matter?
I'm Phyllis Klema. My husband and I live and own 501 Southwest Gage Court, and I would like to thank you for your time and efforts here to protect all of our property owners and our equal rights to inhabit what we currently own. I have four items that I would like to address. Does the current property owner at 501 Southwest Gage Boulevard have a CNG compressor on-site right now in the zoning area of, current zoning of R-1 and O and I-2, which I believe is office and institutional district? What does the noise level of the CNG compressor, and what are the plans to mitigate that noise? We already hear noise of a compressor on that property. Is the proposed four-unit fast fuel, fast fill station really classified as a fueling station for vehicles? If so, does that fueling station meet the minimum setbacks from residential and public My fifth question for the commission is, would any of you like this in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission on this matter? Please step forward.
First of all, thank you all for your service. My name's Jake Klema and Castle Investments, I'm representing the property at 432 Southwest Gage Court Circle. So on your picture, I'm the one right up against the compressor and right up against the filling station. So I'm an investor, business owner in town, and people are probably like, oh, here he comes worried about his investment. Yeah, I am, I'm more worried about, I try to have really high-quality rentals and want to have great enjoyment for my tenants, and if I ever decide to leave that property, that filling station is less than 40 feet off of our back deck. The compressor, which, if you've ever been around a commercial air compressor, I was a little surprised they didn't have the decibel level to share with you. Do you want that 50 foot from your house, is the question I would ask you. But I'll tell you today, I'm actually sharing this because I care more about Topeka. Yes, I'm a taxpayer, but I also, I put my money where my mouth is. I've invested large sums of money in downtown personally, along with my wife, and we think Gage Park is one of the true gems of this city, 160-acre park, right in the middle of town. And we invest- And we invest, or we've donated personal money there as well, not just going there with our kids, but also donating money to Gage Park. And I don't usually share my personal stuff like that, but I share it today because I truly do love Topeka and I want to see us make some great progress. I would get really frustrated if we even consider this. I get frustrated that we take a really quiet neighborhood, that Gage Circle, also it backs up to Prospect Hills, and we would take that and put it in industrial area right next to that. Not to mention, what's it going to do to traffic in Gage, next to Gage Park? Have we considered that? One of the true gems of our city, now we're going to have industrial trucks driving by there, or when people are visiting Gage Park, they're going to be passing industrial trucks. Now, my opinion is in the past, we maybe struggled with Topeka in the planning side of things with some decisions we made, but I think right now we're making some great progress. I give kudos to those that brought in Mars, I mean that Walmart building which is giant, brought in a lot of jobs. We made some really cool progress. And in my career, I get a chance to listen to a lot of great speakers. And one time I got to listen to a military leader and she said when leading troops, a lot of times she had to make the hard right decision instead of the wrong easy decision. And I think a lot of times people that work on planning commissions, sometimes it's hard to tell corporations no because they know they're going to bring in revenue and they're going to bring in jobs, they're going to bring all that stuff in. But today, in reality, what we're talking about is we're talking about putting an industrial area in a residential area. Those yellow pipes, all the possible noise. Once again, we have no idea what decibel it is because they didn't have that information, financially surprising. But when we look at this, if you tell them no and they go and get a proper industrial area like they showed in those photos, away from homes, you notice that was down here next to the river in a lot of industrial area? When you look at that, if you tell them no, are they going to go pull their gas pipelines out of the ground? No, it's utility company. Let's, I think today we have the chance to not have to make the hard right decision, you can make the easy right decision. Ask them, tell them, no, we're not going to do that to Topeka, we're not going to do that to residential neighborhoods, we're not going to do it to Gage Park. Go put it in industrial zone and keep it away from a gem of our city, Gage Park, and keep it away from industrial areas with traffic and noise that's going to hurt the enjoyment of people's properties that they've owned for years. Once again, thank you for your service and thank you for letting me have the time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission on this matter? I'm not seeing anyone, so we will declare the public hearing closed at this time. And then are there any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Warren.
I have a couple of questions. Is it my understanding that there already is a compressor on this site right now? Was that brought up? And if there is, where is it? And maybe I misunderstood it.
Staff does not know that answer, if we could.
Yeah, come on, please.
There's an onsite generator, that's what.
Generator, okay.
It's a generator that kicks on automatically, just to ensure it's in working functional order.
You know, can you describe where that location is?
Absolutely, if you can probably, MapD should have it, if I'm correct. The generator is, let's say, in the south, you kind of see a little box, looks like a small building, kind of just to the left or to the west of the structure itself. The generator sits just to the due west of it. Right there, just due west, I would say maybe 10 feet is where the generator currently sits. And the reason behind that is that that generator operates so that our entire facility, that was a call center, some of you may or may not realize, and we had to ensure that we had power to that facility 24/7/3/6/5, and so that's why that generator was put in place.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, absolutely.
I know the public hearing's been closed, but since the One Gas representative is up here.
Absolutely.
Is it possible to put this new compressor in an enclosed building?
We can.
Three-sided building with gates or something that.
Yes, we can make accommodations, obviously, to mitigate noise as much as possible. It's really, we're not here to cause grief or raise issues, but obviously we want to be sensitive to our neighbors and so we can devise ways to make that happen, to ensure that it's still in safe operable order.
I know you have this site plan all laid out, but is this a follow-up question? Is there another location that that could be put on this site?
It can be reviewed, like I said, this is a conceptual site plan, we just want to make sure we kind of incorporated everything.
Yeah.
We can review an option for that, that's not a problem.
I just feel like if it was along the north property line, it might be a little better location.
Understood.
Based on the proximity to these residential properties.
It's not a problem, we're more than happy to review that, that's no issue on our end.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Cop.
Dan, the access to the, the proposed access off of Gage, is that both a left-hand and right-hand turn?
It's a full access, yes.
I'm sorry?
It's a full access, yes.
Okay. No concerns about turning left out of there?
Not from a traffic operations perspective, no.
Would we expect most of those trucks to be turning left there, like getting to the highway, or would they be potentially like driving through the community or maybe?
It's probably a better question for the applicant.
All right, sorry about that.
It would be based on wherever the need is for the bikes. And one thing I just want to mention as well, I know we talked about traffic, but even with the trucks that we would have present, it would still be less volume than what was there pre-COVID when we were fully functional call center.
Well, yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, how busy are you?
We have approximately 10 crew trucks with a trailer, think of something the size of a dump truck that has a trailer on it that leave in the morning and come back in the afternoon. And then outside of that, most of our service trucks that our technicians drive do not bring them in as often anymore. That way they take them home and they just respond and their work is delivered to them, the technology, so.
So 10 trucks leave in the morning and 10 trucks go home.
And then you could have 20 to 30 individuals who would work onsite as well, but the total volume of vehicles in and out each day will be less than what was there pre-COVID.
But that's what it is right now, correct?
Well, right now, we have maybe 15 cars there a day, give or take, right now, maybe 20, so it would increase, that would probably double at least whenever, if this were approved.
Hey, I just wanted to clarify, the CNG fast fill stations, it appears that they've been there, are these new additions?
These are being new additions.
Okay.
Yes. And like I mentioned, if anyone's curious as to why something looks like there's the public station right there off of 200 East First, if anyone's interested in seeing what it looks like.
Mr. Chairman? If I could ask the applicant one question, I appreciate you saying that you're open to the possibility of either enclosing or moving the compressor. If the planning commission tabled this matter, what kind of hardship does that create for you, if any?
As I say, it doesn't create hardship, that's what the planning commission decides to do, so be it, but I would have no issue moving it if that would be the preference in this meeting right now. We could move it to the north side and accommodate this request.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, but I think I would want to see that on the PUD itself.
Not a problem.
And I guess the only other thing that I was concerned about, because I personally hate lights, I moved to a whole different part of my house because my neighbor has these very god-awful lights that shine all the time. So I guess I'm also wondering about the lighting, is there any way to make sure that it does not interrupt anyone's peaceful summer evening?
No, that's absolutely what we would look to do. I mean, by all means, we're not going to have stuff that's up high that shines over the neighbors, that's not our idea of being a good neighbor in any way, shape or form. And on the security aspect of it, the site itself, like we have some pretty good technology in terms of the type of cameras we use to kind of protect, obviously the investment, anything that we have back there, the fronts, the sides of the buildings, and so in terms of the security of the site itself, it would actually probably increase compared to what it currently is right now, including that back area that we're looking to have rezoned.
Are there any other questions of the representative or owner? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Any other questions of staff?
Chair, Dan, kind of refresh me on what the current zoning allows and it requires a change to allow this modification, right?
Correct. The current zoning is a PUD, so similar to what we're doing here, although it is a PUD with R1, which is the kind of western half of the property, and O and I2, which is the existing office use on the site. So, yeah, that's, the existing zoning is basically R1 and O and I2.
Any other questions of staff? Now here, are there any other comments the commission wishes to make? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Cop?
I'm going to offer a motion to table the matter. Dan, is there a bill, are we expecting to have a meeting in December?
Yes, we will have a meeting in December, absolutely.
And I don't know if that gives the applicant enough time to come back with a revised master plan, but my concern, and there may be others, but my principal concern is the location of the compressor, and I would like to see the applicant either contain the compressor or move it along the north, preferably along the north side of the property.
Are you making a motion?
My motion is to table the matter to the December meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that and follow up the comment that I would really like to see a new concept plan that shows that. The moving of the compressor and potentially enclosing it.
Is a, so I'm, is the compressor also the fueling? Because those are two different things, correct?
Well, one was, no, the existing one was a generator, the new one, that's tucked back in the corner is the compressor.
Okay.
If I may help clarify, are you, we got the compressor, the fast fill stations, the CNG fast fill stations, are those part of what you want to see moved as well? I don't know if they have to go together. If you do move the compressor, do the filling stations go with the compressor?
Sure.
We would likely keep them together in close proximity to each other and we would have no problem moving this stuff to the north. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So I will be clear, is that what everybody's looking for, the compressor and the fast filling state?
A comment was made earlier about the lighting, I don't know if, I know that comes out during the site plan review, but is there any way to get any on this new timetable? Is there a way to put more specificity on the plan regarding the lighting? I know, I think the notes indicate it's to be directional lighting.
I would think, yeah, they could come up with a lighting plan that's a little more specific to what they're actually going to do hopefully by the next meeting.
Because right now, I don't, is there a note on the height of any lighting structure?
I know there's a note about submitting a lighting plan with the site plan. I don't recall about the heights of the lights and so forth.
Well, Mr. Chairman, perhaps if the applicant's going to be coming back and they're going to be tweaking this, maybe they can provide a little bit more specific information of what the nature of the lighting is going to be.
So I want to make sure I understand what the motion is. So the motion is to table it, wanting to address issues of the compressor, the fast fill stations and the lighting, is that what the, that's what's before the commission indicating to the staff what they're looking for? Is there anyone that thinks that it's something different? I just want to make sure we all understand.
Mr. Chair, I want to, I think having an eight-foot white fence and only a six-foot landscape area might be a little bit too small. Maybe the landscape buffer needs to be bigger with some larger vegetation because you put the area lighting there, even if it's directed away from it, you're still going to have those, I'm looking at these houses and they're right there, you're going to be looking out over yellow pipe that's lit up, right? It's going to be kind of a miserable view, so I think more needs to be done along that landscape area to show what you might be able to do other than that. Six foot's not a very big wide area for someone tall enough to even try and make the view a little bit better.
So for the landscape area, you're talking just on the south and the west?
The landscape buffer on the south edge.
Okay, and are you also the west edge as well, or just?
I'm not concerned about this west edge as much, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, those are all friendly amendments to the motion.
Fair enough, all right. Anything else to be discussed before we talk about the motion, so we all understand? All right, so we have a motion and we have a second to table this to December with the recommended items to be addressed. Chris, would you please call for the vote?
Just double check to make sure there's any discussion on the motion in the minutes before we take the vote. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought, are there any further discussion?
No.
All right, I think we're ready to go then.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Preisner? Mr. Freed?
Aye.
And Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-1 with none abstaining.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes care of item D and the action items, and now we'll move on to item E, which are communications to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just have, you already heard one of them, we will have a meeting next month, actually will be a little full, three cases, add this one, we'll have four cases for you for a holiday treat next month. I also want to introduce a new addition to our staff in the audience, if you can stand up, Riannon Friedman, she is our new Director of Development and Economic Growth in the Planning and Development Department, so acting as basically our deputy for the department. And she just started a couple of weeks ago, so you'll be seeing a lot more of her. And I was, had a pleasure to work with her at Downtown Topeka Inc., also go to Topeka before that, so we are very excited to have her and I want you to know that.
Great, thank you, welcome. All right, if that's it for communications, then I believe the next thing is a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Great, we are adjourned. Thank you.